Okay, so we're ready to start the meeting. Mr. Filippos, the floor is yours.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, literally withstanding, one nation, under God, indivisible,
They were deemed justice for all.
We'll do roll call.
Okay, Beech, oops, wait.
Here.
Wait, let me get my... Beech?
Here.
Doll?
Here.
Harvey, here.
Here.
McLaren?
Here.
Nogi?
Here.
Novacek?
Here.
Ulander?
Here.
Filippos?
Here.
So before we start the meeting, I am going to pull up the agenda on the screen for everybody to be able to see it right after roll call. We do have one voting item with regard to a resolution. So I am, for the board members and the public knowledge, I am going to share my screen and I am going to pull up our agenda.
This is Dr. Sarden, if I may, this is Gary Mata. I just want the public to be aware that we had planned on live streaming the meeting. Unfortunately, due to some technical difficulties, we could not do that. So the meeting is being taped and immediately after the meeting, it will be posted on the district website for review.
Great, thank you. So I have the agenda pulled up. So we do have item number one. So Jared, you wanted to take that?
Sure. Motion to approve the resolution, temporary suspension of board policies, governing rules and regulations of meetings of the Board of School Directors, Section 8, Attachment 1. I need a motion.
So...
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Motion by Novacek, second by Sandy Doll. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comments on agenda items? I believe there are none on those.
There are none. I do have one comment, and this may or may not be the place to do it, but I did want to take a minute under this section as public comment, too, and it's not really on agenda items. But I want to take a minute as an administration and as a school board to thank our nurses, our doctors and our first responders out there that are fighting the good fight to help keep us safe and sound. So if we could just take a moment of silence to recognize those people that are working so hard. Thank you.
There are no student representatives this month. Superintendent's report.
Under superintendent's report this evening, I do have a few congratulations. I want to congratulate the following teachers for receiving Donors Choose Grants. Elizabeth Hall received four of them for a total of about $1,500. Let's Find Out, Chapters and Chapters Delure, Reading is Fun, Top Secret Agents Explore the World. And Chrissy Lux received a Read All About It for $433. So congratulations to those teachers. Well done. We do not have any information on items or things. However, we do have two presentations. The first presentation is going to be Dr. Larsonis, who is going to join us. I'm going to give her a second to hop on. Once she is in, I'm going to pull up a presentation. I did put a PDF version of the presentation in your attached to the board agenda. We will pull this presentation up on the screen for people to be able to see. Dr. Larsonis is connecting with us now. Her volume is on. Hi, Dr. Larsonis, how are you this evening?
I am doing well. How is everybody else? I hope you're safe and healthy.
Thank you.
We are fine. Technical difficulties, Amy. So we're going to record the meeting and then we're going to post it on the website after. So I am going to share my screen and Amy, I'm going to pull up your presentation and I will just kind of follow along with you. I will hit click as I need to, okay?
That sounds great, thank you.
All right, so I'm going to share the screen and then I am going to pull up the presentation. Hang on one second. So some of the videos within the presentation, you might have to listen carefully. We've made them as loud as we can. If any of the board members, after we're done with the presentation, want me to send you a link to the videos that you can hear them better, we are willing and able to do that. So with that being said, Dr. Larsonis has led up our reading curriculum committee and our textbook review over the course of the last year, year and a half, and has really done a fantastic job. So I'm going to turn this presentation over to her.
Thank you, Dr. Sarden. So yes, thank you, everyone, for having me represent the ELA team tonight. I know the staff was disappointed they all couldn't be here, but we do have some videos of some important things that they wanted to share. So just real quick, as you're looking at the screen, you'll be able to see who served on the reading team. This has been a two-year process for us. The current reading series that we have right now, that we use, kindergarten through fifth grade, is going on its ninth year. So we'll be finishing up right now our ninth year with the McGraw-Hill Treasures series. The board actually purchased that back in 2010, and then it went into effect for the 2011 school year. So we've had a really great success with that program. Things have gone very well with it. We're actually getting to the point now where it is not rigorous enough, believe it or not. Ten years ago, we had a lot of worry that it was going to be too hard for our kids, and now it is not hard enough. So just a little bit of background of the importance of this. As of December 2019, so it was the last December, we lost all online access to this program. They have phased it out. They're not even housing it on their server anymore. So unfortunately, our teachers, our students can't access anything online regarding our reading series. So as you can understand the state that we're in now, this is very difficult. We're taking pictures of the books and putting them online. But if it was up and running, it would be a lot easier for our kiddos to be able to access their stuff. So we've known about this. That's why we planned for this, and it's been a two-year process for our pilot. Dr. Sarden, if you can go to the next slide, I'll talk a little bit about this. So back in November of 2018, we surveyed all of our staff that teaches reading K-5 to ask them the strengths and weaknesses of our current program and what they would like to see moving forward. So we gathered all those results together. We formed our team, which you just saw on the slide prior, back in December of 2018. And then throughout the rest of 2019, we researched a lot of different ELA companies and things that were out there. We talked to other school districts in the county and in surrounding districts to find out what they were using and if they recommended it. We found that a lot of school districts are in the same boat as us. They're actually in the process of looking for a new reading resource as we speak. So that kind of took us through 2019. We had presentations from four different companies. We had McGraw-Hill, we had Scholastic, we had HMH, and we had Pearson. And then after those four presentations were over and we had a chance to really look at those resources, our team chose two. And that was the HMH series Into Reading and the Pearson My View. So as you can see from the timeline, starting in August of this year, we had teachers piloting both of those series. They're still piloting them now as we speak. And I can speak on behalf of both of these programs. They are both fantastic for the online component right now. The kids that are in those classrooms that are using HMH and using Pearson are actually at an advantage right now because they can access all of their reading stuff online. So throughout the year, we've had tons of professional development for both series. We've met again in January and February with our reading team to compose all of our final results and surveys and get the input from the teachers. And our team has come forward with a recommendation to all of you that we are asking you to purchase the Pearson My View series, kindergarten through fifth grade, next year. And I'm going to turn it over now to some of the teachers that you can hear from them, and then we'll talk a little bit about the end and see if you have any questions. So here's Mrs. Bergman to start us off. Dr. Sarden, we can't hear her. Who are you?
I answered, I wasn't sure what was going on. I absolutely love it.
Can you hear now? Yes.
I didn't feel that they are learning a lot. For example, when we came to the one, it was early in the year. We had read five stories. The sixth week, we knew, that's the way the manual set up. When we got to that sixth week, the children were able to tell me the story names and they were able to tell me information about this story, whether it was a collection, they could tell me the main idea and some supporting details, or they could tell me the characters, the setting and beginning, middle and end. And they were really engaged in all the stories. Moving on to unit four, we went to now in the past. And when we finished the one story, the very last page...
Hang on one second. My fault.
I think the children on their own, and I didn't notice this, but the children on their own noticed that there were pictures within that story from different stories that we had read up until that point. So they're really taking... I love it. I do feel that they're learning a lot. And I do feel they're retaining it because we saw some geese one day at recess. And this was not too, too long ago. So of course, they were flying back. And the kids said, oh, look, that's like how they flew in that story that we read. So again, thank you for the opportunity to pilot. I really have enjoyed using this. The one that hopefully we will choose.
Hi, everyone. My name is Rachel Skurjik and I teach first grade at West Newton Elementary School. I piloted the Pearson series this year. And I want to thank you so much for taking the time to listen to my opinion about the Pearson series. As the year went on, I fell more and more in love with the series. I feel like my favorite thing about the series is their approach to writing. Writing has always been a struggle for primary grades, getting the children to understand how to develop sentences and use the correct grammar when writing. The approach to the Pearson series to write very simple, starting off. And I was concerned at first. It started off wanting them to know what a writer is, how do you become a writer? And then progress from there. And as it progressed, I noticed that the students were learning way more writing techniques and being less stressed about writing in general. And because of that, the writing progressed way better than I ever expected, results that I've not seen in 14 years of teaching. So it was quite impressive to see the students not be so stressed out about writing and how to develop a end result without feeling overwhelmed by it. One of the things that I also loved was the students just seemed to absolutely adore learning again. The stories in the series were so high interest that it just made their love for reading way more than I have ever expected. Also, the stories were of such interest to the students that they would talk about them for units and weekends afterwards. And they would relate a story in one unit to a story that we read a couple of units ago. So it really encouraged and promoted a love of learning, a love of reading, and just an overall love of the ELA demands that we needed. As well as the students, I think it kind of refreshed my love of teaching again. It gave us new things to learn, a new way to approach the learning, promoted the small groups that I've always wanted to do, but sort of didn't know how to completely, you know, get that up and running. Also, the online resources for teachers is amazing. Everything that you need is right there at your fingertips online. It makes actually this crazy time of virtual learning a lot easier for us because I can just go onto the Pearson website and assign students assignments from Pearson that they can get on their Pearson account and complete the assignment. So it's made the virtual learning a little bit easier. The online resources for students are also very nice. I know they're working on even making some more improvements. The one last thing I would like to say about the series is the support that we got from the staff and the presenters and the professional help that was provided to us from Pearson was quite incredible. Scott Walker was an amazing resource. He would reach out to us almost immediately when we had any questions or concerns. They provided resources to us that maybe they weren't really wanting to, but they wanted us to feel comfortable and able to present this in the best possible way. They also took a lot of our recommendations. There was some things that, you know, we weren't too excited about the series, and they actually made the changes. I enjoy doing this pilot, though it was very difficult. I feel that the students of the York School District will benefit greatly from the instruction and things that they will learn. See how they progress as each grade level has the series and what they can do. I really appreciate the time that you've taken to listen to me, and I hope that you are all staying safe and happy and healthy and stay home. Thanks so much for listening to me. Bye-bye.
Hi, my name is Chrissy Snyder and I teach second grade at Monroe. And I was able to pilot the Pearson series this year. And I just wanted to point out some reasons why I really hope that we purchase the series and it would really benefit our children for these reasons. The first reason is the books. The books are consumable. And so we were able this year to actually highlight and write and do all of those things right inside the stories. Were of high interest. The kids are... And those stories also produce some opportunities for other investigation and research because the kids were so excited about what we were reading. The other reason is that they are challenging. The stories were a lot harder than they were last year. But as we're going to talk later, there's some opportunities for leveling with higher reading levels and lower reading levels. But the stories in the book were challenging. They gave the kids new vocabulary words and just, I think they would move them further along than our current reading series would. The next reason that I love this series was because of the leveled materials. The leveled readers and the leveled cold readers were two of my favorite things. The leveled readers were also, again, high interest. There were many times when in small groups, I had a leveled reader out and the kids would ask for more information. So I was able to send that small group back to their seat or the next day, they were able to take that topic and use it to research about something else. A perfect example would be one that we read on Benjamin Franklin. They were so excited about Benjamin Franklin, who to some second graders might be a boring historical figure, but they wanted to learn more about him. So we spent some time doing some more research and they wrote a little report about him. The next reason that I think Pearson is a fabulous series and I really hope that we are able to get it is that because of the leveled cold reads. These are my absolute favorite things in the whole series. It is three stories and it teaches the skill for the week. So if we were working on characters, these three stories taught the kids about characters, but the stories were on each level. So there is a lower level, an on level and an advanced level. These stories, once again, high interest. The kids were excited about them. The one story in particular was about quilting. And we actually used those directions and each of the kids were able to make a quilt square. So we have a finished product based on the directions in that leveled reader. The interesting thing about the leveled readers, or the leveled cold reads is that the kids, the stories and the questions teach the kids exactly the skill that we're working on. And I think that it's really going to prepare them for the PSAs and the other testing that they're going to have to do in third grade. And the last reason is because of the online component. Especially now that we are teaching online, I am able to give the kids, even if they didn't take their book home with them, I'm able to give them the story. They can read the story. They can complete the work because of the online component. So these are just some of the things that I really enjoyed about teaching Pearson. And I felt that it was a great company. The sales reps, the trainers, they were so helpful. And anything that we needed, they were there for us. If we had a question, if there was something that we didn't like about the series, they tried to fix it for us or show us where we could get the resources. Thank you.
Good afternoon, York School Board and Administration Team. I am Leanne Staben and I am currently the third grade teacher at HW Good Elementary. I am going to share some of the positive aspects of piloting the Pearson series this year at HW Good. The Pearson Realize pilot was conducted by Leanne Staben and Lisa Terzalino, our reading specialist. Pearson Realize is perfect for distance learning. Students can log into their account and the teacher can assign classwork each day. Students are interested in the stories and they enjoy the illustrations. Each student has a consumable book in order to make notes or to highlight. Each story is challenging and needs a more rigorous educational component. The spelling words are difficult, but students are willing to meet the challenge. This is our current vocabulary and spelling words. Students are responsible for five vocabulary words and 15 spelling words per story. As you can see, they are pretty difficult for third grade, but most of them are meeting the challenge and are successful with each new test. The Pearson Realize series has stories that connect to science and social studies. Each unit is connected between grade levels. HW Good Elementary could do a building-wide study on a particular topic such as plants or animals. Teachers could incorporate a particular science or social studies unit in with a particular story of the week. Thank you so much. Stay safe and always choose kind.
Hi, everyone. I'm Heather Amy. I'm a fourth grade teacher at West Newton Elementary. I've been a part of this reading team since last year. So I was a part of the original team that went through four different series, went through presentations of four different series and narrowed them down from there. So of the four that we went through, when we narrowed them down to these final two, I chose to do Pearson at that point because I just even liked it so much just from the presentations and the review of the materials. From that point, when I began piloting in my classroom, I just became more and more in love with this series. One of my favorite things about it is the interest level of the stories for the students. My kids got so excited about the stories. Some of the stories are little excerpts from chapter books. And when we would get to the end, they would be so excited to find the next book that they would go, or the next chapter, excuse me, that they would go find the book in the library. So they really love that. The interest level even carried through to the cold reads, which are just very short stories that we can do quickly for sometimes for assessments or in small group instruction. And they also love those. I had kids taking, some of them home, some of them had things like recipes and things in the stories. And they told me they would take them home and give them to their grandmothers. So they really enjoyed those. And one of the best parts about all of that is, is that at the end of the year, they actually get to keep those books. So all those stories that they love so much, that really fostered their love of reading, they get to take home with them. So it's not something that they leave behind in fourth grade or whatever grade level they're in. They get to take them home and use them as their bedtime stories or just reading to enjoy at any point. So that was very nice. I love the leveling of the material in the Pearson series. So everything I use in my classroom, I could use almost everything in that series, has some leveled form, including the projects. So there are projects in there where they would have to do some type of research and they use different articles of research. And even the articles were leveled, which a lot of series have. But the thing that really stuck out to me about the Pearson series was when something was leveled, like let's say an article in the research projects, when it was leveled, it was the exact same article. So even if a kid was a below-level reader or an above-level reader and they did have something, they had a different reading ability in the leveled work, when they came back together as a group, they were all still discussing the exact same article. So it wouldn't stand out to anybody else if anybody did something different because they were all reading the same things, just at different reading abilities. So I love that part. I really enjoyed the fluidity of the series. This is a very rigorous series, which was a little overwhelming at first to me as a teacher. But the kids really rose to the occasion. And I think that something that made that so easy was the fluidity of it. All the word study and the spelling are all connected to one another. It rolls back through each story, through each unit. Kids were actually breaking down words, using word study skills that we had done two units prior with each other in small groups, remembering Greek and Latin roots that they had done and breaking apart words that were very difficult, that I had never had experience with kids in my classroom doing that before. And at least not to that extent. And that's in 14 years of teaching, so I was pretty pleased with that. The trainings through Pearson were phenomenal. Whatever we said that we were having trouble with as teachers, they would address instantly in those trainings. Even if it was something we hadn't told them about prior to, they would help us with that as soon as they got there. And so they were so responsive. In between trainings, if I had a question, I could ask Mr. Walker and get a response right away. So that was very helpful and made the transition into a new series a lot less overwhelming for me as an educator. The online resources in this series are phenomenal, which is proving to be very helpful at this time. So all of the teaching materials are online. And when I say that, I don't just mean printables. I mean things that I can actually use as teaching tools in my classroom and now in a situation like this. So everything's very easily organized. And really, everything that I use is on there and is now very accessible to my students at this time as well. But in an organized fashion, I can assign it to them instead of there just being a whole bunch of stuff all over the place. I can assign it to them as they need it and in an organized, structured way. So those were the things that I really enjoyed about this series and that really helped my students grow. So thank you for listening to me.
Another component of the Pearson reading program that I would like to speak about would be the spelling. The spelling is part of a reading-writing bridge that is the reading, I'm sorry, the spelling and the grammar put together, which does exactly that. It bridges the gap from analyzing different parts of the stories to the writing component in the reading workshop. What I do like about the spelling words is that each list, at the fifth grade level at least, deals with either prefixes, suffixes, or root words. A few of the lists do deal with certain spelling patterns. What I like about the focus being primarily on prefixes, suffixes, and root words is that it provides the students a good foundation for understanding how to put portions of words together to decipher the meanings of certain words. I honestly believe that as the students get older and work with more in-depth content leveled reading material through other classes in their schooling, this knowledge of prefixes, suffixes, and roots and what their meanings are and how their meanings play a part in certain words will come in handy. When students take this knowledge of how to break down a word into prefixes, suffixes, and/or root words and figure out a meaning of an unknown word, that definitely could be beneficial to them when they are in higher level classes and reading in general throughout the course of their life. So I do enjoy that about the spelling portion. The words are a little challenging at this point in time, but I feel that as the students use Pearson throughout their schooling and from grade to grade to grade, it would build on itself and then not be as challenging for the students in the future. So I do enjoy the spelling component and I see how learning it at this level could then benefit them later in their schooling and in life in general.
Finally, this reading series is very challenging. There's a lot to it and it took us some time to get used to it. And my students for the first month or so was a struggle, but I can honestly say after a month and a half or so, our students made some big strides and were showing a lot of improvement with this reading series. And I think all of our students would benefit from having this reading series. A couple of quick things. Throughout the year, Pearson's support has been incredible. Anything with technology, with materials, with the book, they were there to answer our questions right away. They even offered trainings throughout the year to help all the teachers who were trying out this reading series. And those trainings were very beneficial, very, very important. So that was a big deal for me with all the support we had from them throughout this whole entire process. Then I want to say finally, a big thank you to Dr. Sarden and Dr. Larsonese for all their hard work. I really, really think that this reading series will benefit all of our students. Thank you.
Evening. My name is Holly Frankenberry and I'm a Title I reading specialist at Mendon. This year I had the opportunity to pilot both reading programs and strongly feel that Pearson is the best choice for our district. I worked with Chrissy Snyder in her second grade classroom with the Pearson My View. My Title students really liked the materials, especially the leveled readers and the leveled practice. Pearson gave me the opportunity to select materials that were at the students' correct level and therefore they were very excited, engaged in learning. In addition, I piloted the Success Maker Intervention Program with my first through fourth grade Title students. My students really enjoyed the program and I like how it assesses and reinforces the skills that they need. It provides a lot of data about performance, growth, and areas of need. It also gives supplemental materials that I can use to help my students in these areas to reinforce the skills. These are the reasons why I feel Pearson is the right choice for our district. Thank you for your time and have a great night.
I'm Lisa Terzalino and I'm the Title I Reading Specialist at HW Good Elementary School. I have had the opportunity to pilot Pearson My View with Mrs. Stevan's third grade class. The series includes a large amount of small group instruction and materials, which is important for reaching those students with various reading levels and abilities. The content included in this series is rigorous, especially compared to the series that we are currently using. The students really enjoy the stories and the activities that go along with each lesson. Each unit revolves around a theme connected to science and social studies, so it makes it super easy to teach science and social studies right along with the reading. They basically reinforce each other. I was amazed at how the students would recall information and use vocabulary from past lessons. At first, I thought this series was going to be extremely difficult for our students, which in the beginning it was, but the students met the challenge and they have become successful. I feel that adopting these series would be extremely beneficial for our students. I also had the opportunity to pilot Success Maker with my Title I reading students in kindergarten through third grade. I absolutely love this program and so do the students. It provides adaptive, game-based reading instruction. The students work through exercises at their level while the system continuously reports their progress and adjusts lessons to provide remediation or enrichment based on the student's performance. The program serves as an intervention tool, you know, to help close the gap for our struggling readers. The students enjoy this program so much, they're always asking me, can we go on Success Maker? They don't even realize that they're learning while they're engaged in this program and that's what we want. We want the students to enjoy learning. Again, I think adopting these programs would be the best decision for our students and I hope that you would consider purchasing them. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Hi there. My name is Larsen Never. I'm the Title I reading teacher at West Newton Elementary. And I wanted to share with you some of the positive impacts that the Pearson reading series has had on my students this year. I've had the opportunity to work with kindergarten, first, and fourth grade teachers who have piloted Pearson. The series is filled with rigorous content and gives students the foundation they need to be successful learners. My students loved each weekly story and developed skills that far surpassed anything I could have ever dreamed of. As a reading specialist, I was able to also pilot the intervention piece called Success Maker. Success Maker was an online tool that provided prescriptive lessons that were individual to each child's needs. It also provided data, reports, interventions, all based on what each academic need that the student had. I was very impressed with the components of Pearson overall and everything that it had to offer us as a district. I just wanted to thank you for your time and have a great night. Bye.
Am I back? Can you hear me now?
Yep, go ahead.
Well, thank you, School Board. You got to hear from 10 of our 17 teachers that piloted throughout the school year. As you can see, they had a lot of really important information about the different concepts of the program that they love and how successful that it's been for not only on the teacher end, but also for our students. And obviously, that's our, that's our main goal moving forward, is to develop some type of rigorous program that's going to be able to challenge the teachers and the students each and every day and make them better than they were the day before they got in the classroom. So some of the things on the slide here, just to recap very quickly, because I know that was a lot of information, you know, why we picked this. We picked it because of the rigorous content. The kids love the stories. I actually hear about the stories all the time from the kids. They're excited to read and learn. There is a huge social studies and science component, which is a fantastic thing because our social studies and science series are also getting out of date at this point. They've been around for about 11 or 12 years now. So we are hopeful that our reading series will actually be able to encompass the social studies and science, so we wouldn't have a separate purchase for that. The writing process is interactive. It teaches the process. They love the cold reads. Obviously, the interventions and differentiated activities were fantastic. And the big key is here, there's no hardback book anymore, which is fantastic because that's a huge cost. So we're just buying a consumable that the kids can actually highlight right in their text. They can write notes about the paragraphs, which is proving to the teachers to be more successful as far as reading comprehension goes. The pacing was appropriate. They love the assessments. They have the strong word study and the phonics component. The questions and design of this are similar to the state testing, which we're seeing on the PSSAs and the Keystone exams. And obviously, My View provides a lot of robust daily instruction for vocabulary. And here's just a brief overview of the whole program. As you can see at the top, the program encompasses everything that we need and want from an ELA program. It has our reading workshop. It covers our foundational skills. It's teaching the teachers how to break and teach in small groups. It has the reading-writing bridge. It has a separate writing workshop. And then obviously, at the end of each unit, as some of the teachers talked about, there's a project-based inquiry and assessment. So that is pretty much how our pilot went and our reading team and our two-year process. And, you know, on behalf of myself, Dr. Sarden and the reading team, our hope is that you will consider moving forward with the purchase of My View and Success Maker for our students for the 2021 school year.
So is there any questions? That was a lot of information, but we wanted to make sure that everybody gets to see because obviously, when you do any purchase of any reading series, it is a significant purchase. The cost of the series, I can tell you, for the actual materials itself, and I'll give you the ballpark figures, about $200,000. The Success Maker component of it is around $20,000 and that is our Tier Three that helps our Title I kids and also assists with our special needs kids. And then there is additional training surrounding that that is right around, I think, 15, give or take, is that about right, 15,000? So it is a pretty significant expense. Our plan is to build it into the budget. I can tell you though, everything in that purchase is for six years. So this is a cost for purchasing this series, but that is also a cost for the materials over the course of this series. So that is all of those consumable supplies, K to five across the district for that six year period of time, including that Success Maker. I can tell you, that cost is less than what we spent on the series that we purchased. And Mr. Navatchek will remember that because it was the first meeting I met Mr. Navatchek, actually.
Yes.
That was, this series actually cost less than that series did back in 2011, I think, purchased. So questions on this series itself?
How, how high, personally, I'd have to read the, excuse me, the stories to see how high interest they are. I, I, I just would. Okay? And as far as the writing component, you know, you can make interesting writing out of any story if you're creative. And I don't, any salesperson is going to say or help you as much as they want to get a sale. I mean, that's just a fact.
I would disagree because I got to tell you, the other salesperson that we dealt with, with the other series we piloted with the same number of teachers, I can tell you that their customer service and their salespeople were horrible.
Well, then they're not very good salespeople.
They are certainly not.
Because any salesperson, I think Jared could agree with this, is going to do what they can and help you. How do we know that this series, just like the old series, is not going to quit their online service?
Well, I can tell you, after six, seven, eight years, everybody quits their online service and that's what happened with the current series. I mean, it's outlive, standards change and things change. And after a period of time, all of our resources come offline. I can tell you, we've had several here at the high school with regard to science, social studies, and all those, that no longer offer that online platform. Usually, the online platforms for any type of company, you know, is usually at a, at a best, six years. And Pearson, the last series lasted for nine. And we actually, for this year, had to go on to a lot of printing out in order to make it through this year to be able to make a smart decision about this series. This has been something our teachers have been working on for the good portion of about a, about a year and maybe two months now at this point. So it's something that has taken a lot of time and effort to look at, to analyze. I can tell you, they analyzed the language art component, the phonics component, the, we had entire sheets of things that each teacher had to analyze both series specifically based on reading skills. So the high interest of the stories is one thing, but I can tell you that the technical aspect of English Language Arts and reading was analyzed with this series as well. So the technology component, you're, you'll be six years and I can tell you, it'll probably become outdated at that point, just like the rest of our series.
Well, I don't know. I, you know, I-
We have no reading series to use when this is said and done after this year. You need to know and understand that.
Yeah, we, we actually, we couldn't even get any of the printable materials this year. All of the workbooks for the practice book, the grammar and the phonics. I bought everything that Follett had in their workshop last year because McGraw-Hill actually stopped printing any of this material for treasures back in 2019.
And that's why we stocked up, and that's why we stocked up on what we could get to be able to make it another year, to be able to properly analyze these series together. Because otherwise, we would not have had materials last year either. So we bought what they had and then made it through this year, but we have no materials going into next year.
So, so basically, this is roughly six years at a cost of like $39,200 a year on average then?
Correct.
Okay.
And cheaper than the last series we purchased in 2011. I want to make sure I say that.
Which personally, I didn't like, but-
I am well aware. I recall that meeting very clearly, Mr. Navatchek, and where you sat in the LGI.
Yes, yes.
Our first interaction, Mr. Navatchek, ever. In fact, you might have been the first person I interacted with in the district ever. It was a memorable experience for me as you.
Yes.
Any other questions?
But I made, I made, I made it work.
You sure did and you did it with fine form, I must say.
Thank you. So in the end here, we do need a new series.
Correct.
And, and you, your team has been preparing for it for the last year or two, right?
And I can tell you that the others, yes, they, since like January, February last year, I can tell you that the other series that we piloted, we ended up getting quotes on both just to be prepared and that series was significantly higher than this one.
Okay.
And one of the reasons the first two resources were eliminated back when we looked at the four was because we knew that those series were significantly more cost as well. And that's, you know, part of our elimination was through the technicality of English Language Arts reading. But this, this series out of the two we've been piloting now, we, we got quotes just to make sure that we were smart, not only looking at what we needed and what our kids needed, but also we were financially responsible. Any other questions from the group? Okay. So Dr. Larsonese, I am going to ask you to get out, politely.
No problem. I just want to, real quick, because I, I just want to thank the board and I want to thank you, Dr. Sarden, for your support. And I also want to thank each member of the reading team. Those teachers really put hours and hours of work into all of this over the past two years. So I would be remiss if I didn't thank them. So have a good night, everybody.
Right before, right before you check out, and that's the other thing I wanted to say. So Dr. Larsonese was chosen to lead this committee because Dr. Larsonese's teaching degree is English Language Arts and her background is that. So she was chosen to lead the committee based on the fact that she has experience teaching, reading, and language arts. So she does have that background for this committee and I would be remiss if I didn't say, the amount of work and time that she has put in with this, with our entire elementary staff up through grades five and six has been fantastic. So I, before you, before we throw you out of the meeting, we want to make, say thank you because you, you did a fantastic job.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Larsonese.
Thank you, Dr. Larsonese.
Any questions that you have?
All right.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay. So our next presentation, I'm going to reshare my screen and I'm going to, I'm going to mute everybody just for the presentation piece and then I will open that back up once we have some discussion. I'm going to mute everybody. I am going to put the budget information up and then I'm going to, Mr. Meyer? No, I don't know what that box is. Hang on one second, so. No, I don't think, can everybody see what I have up on the screen?
I can't.
There's, there's no, in front of it? You can see the whole thing?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, okay. All right, Jim is going to take it over here just momentarily.
Can you make it a little bit bigger?
Yeah, I can. Give me one second. I'm muting everybody so we can make sure we hear.
Thank you.
I will, I'll make it bigger.
Can everybody hear me okay?
I think.
Okay.
Shake your heads if you can hear. There you go.
Okay. Again, as I mentioned to you before, my intention tonight was to make a formal presentation to the board and the public, but with the change in the format of the meeting and the events that have taken place over the past month, I'm simply just going to give you an update on a budget. It's a work in progress budget. The budget that you do see on the screen is a preliminary budget that calls for no tax increase for next year. The real estate tax collections, they're based on our current assessed values, which they were increased over last year. The state and federal subsidies that you're seeing in front of you are based on allocations that we received from both the Department of Pennsylvania Education. On the revenue side, the reading series that Dr. Larsonis just presented is included in this budget. Are, in addition to that, our transportation contract calls for a 2.25% increase. Our healthcare premiums across the board went up by 5.2%. A slight increase in the presters rate. And there are some benefit and salary personnel changes included in this budget that we will be having a special meeting with the executive, executive session with the board to discuss this. There is a little shortfall in this budget of about $263,000. But if we go to page two, you'll see my bigger concerns with the budget I have in front of you. The $263,000 with the $1.2 million fund balance, audit at fund balance, I think we can cover there. I am going to do some projections on the current year, and I am projecting some type of surplus since we're going to have some savings with the school closure. Dr. Sarden, can you go to page two, please? Thank you. Again, this is a work in part, work in progress budget. I just want to update the board and the public on some discussions that are taking place and some considerations that I think we, as a school district, have to take over the next six or eight weeks. I've been in constant communication with a group called PASBIL, who is working with state legislators on some bills that are being presented to the legislation. One that's running around today is freezing property taxes for next year for all school districts across Pennsylvania. Again, with the preliminary budget that I just put in front of you, that would not impact us. But I do want to make the board aware that that is a discussion going on across the state. A second bill that's being introduced out there is to extend the property tax collection discount period to September 30th. Again, that does not impact us. The way our current real estate tax bills are set up is our discount period goes until September 30th. Our face goes until November 30th, and they become delinquent December 31st. The third item, the state subsidy allocation, is a little bit of a concern on my end. There is some discussion out there. The numbers that you see in front of you for 2020, 21 is what Governor Wolf rolled out in his budget back in February, which gave York School District additional 58,560 in basic ed and an additional 30,000 in special ed. There is some discussion because the state revenues are declining as we speak, that there's a discussion of rolling them back one and possibly two years. Again, that's just discussion. I, I think we have to sit, wait and see what happens and what develops over the next few weeks with these two line items that would have a significant impact on our budget for next year. If it is a one-year rollback and they get rid of the proposed lines, we're only talking about 88,000. But if we're looking at a two-year rollback, we could be talking between $200,000, $250,000 that could be reduced on our end. Again, that's just discussion, but I want to make the board aware that it is discussion that would impact the budget. Third item, and we talked about with transportation, the reimbursements are set on our payments. So if our payments do go down for transportation, it will equate to less subsidy for next year. That's what's going on at the state level. Locally, the budget that I have in front of you, the preliminary budget, has our real estate collection on average. Usually, we usually collect about 93.5% of what we built before it becomes delinquent. Again, with the unemployment rate, what's going on, I'm going to have to take a good look at that number and probably make an adjustment to that number. I'd be surprised with the new year coming up that we would be able to collect 93% of our built real estate tax collection. And with earned income and per capita, per capita collections, I am in discussion with Burkeheimer. They are going to try to do somewhat of a projection with our collections over the next six to eight weeks. The issue is not with the collections for the first quarter, which we received the bulk of those collections in our April payments because most people were working in January, February, and a good part of March. So our April revenues will decline slightly. It's the second quarter coming up that we do that collection in June, July, and August that I think we're going to see the significant impact on. I've been in discussion with Burkeheimer, and we are, we are going to do some, they're going to do some projections for our district on that. In addition to that, some of the district factors that we have to consider is the expiration of two current contracts that affect roughly about 200 of our employees that we're continuing to negotiate with. I do have some numbers built into this budget, but that's for further discussion. Again, the reading series is part of this budget, and the transportation of a 2.25% increase is part of this budget. My concern a little bit is if our, our collections do slow down, our first bond payment of about 2.4 million takes place in October. Now, in the past, we haven't had a con, past couple of years when I went back and looked, we haven't had a cash flow issue when making those payments. But that is yet to be seen with the unemployment rate in the slowing of our collections. And again, our current fund balance is about 1.2 million. I'm going to work over the next two or three weeks to get a projection of where this year's going to fall. Again, the difficulty is going to be trying to project our earned income collections over the next few weeks, or next few months, excuse me. Keep in mind, the way our system's set up, our earned income collections that take place in July and August go back to the current year. So we'll have to take a close look at that. So that's where the budget stands at this point. Again, there's, there's a lot of moving parts. There may be some legislation out there that affects what kind of numbers that are going to be put into this budget. I'm a little bit inclined to just to sit back and see what happens over the next two or three weeks, both with some negotiations and with some state legislation to see how this is really going to impact this budget. Does anybody have any questions? And if something does come up over the next couple of weeks before we meet again, I certainly will get that out to the board members.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to share back the screen, and I'm going to put up the agenda. Give me one second. Okay, so with that being said, that's the last of my report. Mr. President?
Under Budget and Finance, I need a motion to approve items one through three.
Hang on, let me unmute. Sue, you need to unmute. Hang on, I'm unmute now. And Steve, you need to unmute.
Okay.
Hang on, Sue's still muted. Let me make sure, there she goes. Okay, so I think everybody's unmuted, so go ahead.
We need a motion to approve items one through three for-
I'll make the motion.
I second.
A motion by Mr. Novacek, second by Mr. Kenders. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under item four, approved the general fund bills for payment, the cafeteria bills, and the construction fund bills for $3,426,064. I need a motion.
McLaren.
Motion by Kenders, second by McLaren. And we'll do a roll call vote.
Beach.
No.
Doll.
Yes.
Harvey, yes. Kenders?
Yes.
McLaren?
Yes.
Nogi?
Yes.
Novacek?
Yes.
Ulander?
Yes.
Philippos?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Eight to one.
Eight to one.
Secretaries' report.
Executive sessions were held on the following dates. Thursday, March 19th, 2027 p.m., a virtual meeting for personnel litigation. And Tuesday, April 7th, 2020, before the meeting, virtual meeting, personnel and litigation.
And there are no voting items that, that's just on there as an accident.
Under professional employees, I need a motion for items one through two.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Nogi.
Ulander.
Second by Ulander. All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Nothing under classified employees, under athletic activity. We'll approve the following coaches. Motion to approve Jim Nessar, head varsity basketball coach.
Can I interject here? Dr. Sarden, can you please repeat the comment that you said to me on the process of, on how the coaches are relisted for hire after the end of the season, exit interview?
Sure, I can. So at the end of each season, the athletic committee, along with the building principal and athletic director do exit interviews, talk about how the season went. And then all of the positions by contract are posted at the end of each season. And then that athletic committee, coupled with the principal and the athletic director, make recommendations for coaches to come back. Even though they're posted, there's still recommendations for coaches to come back. And when those recommendations are made, those are usually the coaches that are presented to the board for approval, even though we do post them. There are occasions when people either resign or are not interested in coming back. And we do, again, if there's postings and people apply, then there is that process that we go through.
Can you please explain the posting? What do you mean posting? The locations of what the posting is?
So we post all the positions after each season, meaning they're posted to take applications, whether it's internally or externally. Every season, we do applications, and then we interview for those positions that we have nobody for that's not recommended back.
And so the process for it to be advertised in the paper would be just based on the select athletic committee board members on that, then?
It would be made, so the athletic committee would make those recommendations as well as the principal and the athletic director. And based on those recommendations, that is usually brought back to the entire board for discussion prior to it being advertised. So the, the athletic committee brings it back to the entire board. There's a discussion held, and then whether or not that position is advertised at that.
Is there, yeah, is there any, is there any criteria or that the, anybody on the athletic committee needs to attend any of the sporting events, that they get a good evaluation of the coach? Or is that just based on, on the principal's recommendation?
I know that they go through an exit interview process with all of the coaches as part of that exit interview. And I mean, I would assume that people from that committee are attending those events. I mean, obviously, it's not required, but I have seen a number of the athletic committee people at different, different sporting events. So it was part of their responsibility.
Okay, must be the ones that I'm not at, then. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Need a motion for Jim Nessar.
I make the motion.
Second. Motion by Novacek, second by Kenders.
Roll call, please.
A roll call.
Beach.
Yes.
Doll.
No.
Harvey, yes. Kenders?
Yes.
McLaren?
No.
Nogi?
Yes.
Novacek?
Yes.
Ulander?
Yes.
Philippos?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven to.
Need a motion for Mike Girditch, head varsity girls' basketball coach.
Ulander.
Motion by Ulander.
Nogi.
Second by Nogi. Roll call.
Beach.
Yes.
Doll?
Yes.
Harvey, yes. Kenders?
Yes.
McLaren?
No.
Nogi?
Yes.
Novacek?
Yes.
Ulander?
Yes.
Philippos?
Yes.
Motion carries, eight to.
Motion to hire Greg Melvin, assistant varsity girls' basketball.
Harvey.
Motion by Nogi, a second.
Novacek.
Second by Mr. Novacek. Roll call.
Beach.
Yes.
Doll?
Yes.
Harvey? Yes. Kenders?
Yes.
McLaren?
Yes.
Nogi?
Yes.
Novacek?
Yes.
Ulander?
Yes.
Philippos?
Yes.
Motion carries, all, all yes.
Motion for Eric Bush, varsity head coach wrestling.
Ulander.
Motion by Ulander. Second by Kenders. All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to hire Matthew Moultonis, assistant varsity wrestling.
Nogi.
Motion by Mr. Nogi.
Doll.
Second by Sandy Doll. All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to hire Nikki Spoon, hired varsity cheerleading sponsor.
Ulander.
Motion by Ulander, second by Novacek. All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Do we want to group the-
Can you spot it up someplace?
Do we want to group the rest of these to move this along? Or do we want to continue to do these individual? I mean, we can, I'll keep doing them individual.
Is there anybody after Brian Zerone? I can't see the rest of the thing.
There's William Sherbundy, Rick Plazio, and Ben Hofer.
I'm fine with the rest.
Oh, my.
Okay, we'll make a motion to hire the remaining coaches as listed. We'll need a motion then.
Kenders.
Motion by Kenders.
Second it.
Second by Mr. Novacek. All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Under District Operations?
Just people that attend sporting events so they could vote on them.
Motion, motion for items one through four.
Harvey.
Motion by Harvey, second.
Doll.
Second by Doll. Anybody have any questions on this? All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Under Board Reports, WIU 7 report, Mr. Kenders?
No report at this time.
CWCTC report- CWCTC report, Sandy?
Well, we're interviewing and we have three candidates. And I think we've narrowed it down to two and I think we're going to have our final pick next week.
And that's for director position.
Director.
Director, okay.
Okay. Under PSBA, Sue Harvey?
Nothing.
No report this week, okay.
Yeah.
Any other committee reports? Old business? Anything under new business?
I have one thing under new business. We found out today from the band director that we have been named 2020 Best Community for Music Education from the National Association of Music Merchants. They did a full review of our music program, ensembles, concerts, engagement, community involvement, our faculty education and background, as well as our representation at district, regional, and state levels. And they came out today with a listing of those districts that are considered the 2020 Best Community for Music Education and Yawk was named as one of them. I did put a post out on Facebook, which we launched that, um, today on our social media account. I'm sure Mr. Sutherland is setting that up as well. So I just want to commend our music program for a job well done and for our community for their support in, um, our programs within the district. We, we pride ourselves in taking our arts and our, all of those programs as, as much and as important as everything that we're doing. So, um, this just shows that commitment with that. So I want to thank the board and I want to thank those teachers and people that worked so hard.
Thank you, Dr. Sarden. Under Solicitors Report?
I have no report for public, uh, portion of the meeting this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Manna. Under Citizens Comments?
I, I just have one comment and this was only because I was not at last month's meeting when Mr. Evans, um, announced his retirement. And I've worked very closely with him over the last couple of years. So I would be remiss if I did not, uh, take the time now to publicly thank him for everything he's done for the district. I don't know how many of you are aware, but he served, started serving the district as the Assistant Athletic Director in 1993. And from then until 2009, when he became the Acting Athletic Director. And in 2000, 2011, he was hired as our part-time athletic director. And I want to make one point known, in all his years as the athletic director, even though it was always in the budget that he could have an assistant, he never did. And that saved the district roughly $70,000, $80,000. And while we have his title listed as a part-time AD, I think we would all agree that he, he's far from a part-time anything. And his dedication to this job and his diligence in performing it has been above and beyond what most full-time athletic directors exhibit. And as I said, I've had the honor of working with him very closely as the Athletic Committee Chairperson. And the commitment he shows to his job and the dedication that he showed to our kids was simply amazing. Um, we're going to have a very difficult time finding someone to fill his shoes as our athletic director. And on a personal level, it, I'm really going to miss working with him. He was a great person to work with, very, very great person to work with.
Thank you very much, Sue. We, I think we all would agree with those comments.
I do. I do, too.
Dr. Sarden, do you have anything under Citizens Comments?
I, I don't have anything. Our comment period for virtual meetings is until noon the day of the meeting. So any comments that come in after noon would be reported out at the following. So anything that would have came afternoon, I will report out, um, as part of the May agenda if we are still virtual. If we are not still virtual, we, we'll report it out then anyways.
Okay, well, that being said, we, we hope our whole community continues to be safe and secure. And we need a motion to adjourn.
I just, uh, I just want to say, uh, thank you, Dr. Sarden and the staff for all that you are doing for the district. It's really appreciated. Thank you very, very much and be safe, please.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
9:04, a motion to adjourn.
Harvey.
Motion by Harvey, I need a second. Second by Kenders. All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Thank you all and be safe.
This one note, this recording, I will end the recording before we, when we hang up and it will be online, one sit process. So I want to thank everybody for their time and effort tonight to make our first virtual public meeting go smoothly. Thank you so much. Thanks to Mr. Sanders, too, for the hard work and dedication he has put in as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night, everyone. Thanks, have a great night. Good night.
Good night.
Good night, guys. Have lots.